Ah, it is on. Good afternoon, everybody, and I'm glad to see so many of you here. My name is Juanita Skilman, and I am the president of United Mutual. I am also the chair of the Governing Documents Committee, and the board directors who are on that committee are Maggie Blackwell and Steve Leonard. And we also have three member advisors from the community. The bylaws have not been really updated since 1994. That's 25 years ago. In 2012, we made a couple of changes when we moved to the community center to change the address, but we did not do anything into the regular bylaws. The bylaws were 60-some pages long. So our goal when we tackled this, and we did it for a year, line by line by line, was to, in every way we could, simplify it and to bring it up to date with current law. And we worked very closely with our attorney, Jeff Beaumont. Everything that we did or suggested had to go by him before we could put it in. Bylaws are now just 20 pages. The red-lined version of the bylaws, if anybody wants to go see what we took out, are on the website and have been on the website. We're not keeping anything secret. But if we had put those in the packet with the current bylaws and the ballot, it would have been enormously expensive. As it is, it'd cost $40,000 to send those ballots out. And so if we had added another 40 pages, it would have been twice that much or more. But we are required to do the secret ballot, which is the envelope in an envelope, et cetera. We had at first thought maybe we could send them out with the audit report in the spring, but we were told, no, that's not legal. You have to do the secret ballot. And so that's why you got this big envelope with the secret ballot in it. I don't expect everybody to agree with everything that we've done. We're here today to answer any questions that we can and to hear you out. We want you to be able to express whatever your views are. But what I do ask is, no matter which way you think, please return your ballot. We need a certain number of ballots to make it a legal quorum for the vote. So whether you vote no or whether you vote yes, which is, of course, what we hope, please return your ballot by July 30th. I'm going to start by introducing Jeff Beaumont, who is our attorney, and he's going to go through some of the questions that we have gotten regarding legal aspects of the bylaws, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Good afternoon, Board of Directors. Good afternoon, residents, homeowners, shareholders, members, however you want to characterize them, which is a topic of discussion for today. What are we talking about here? I'd like to just give you a brief overview of the bylaws for United and what they serve to do for purposes of you as members of the corporation and your board of directors, and then get into, what is my understanding, is a couple of concerns that have been brought to the board's attention and to VMS's attention, and hopefully I can answer some questions before we actually get into the open forum session of this town hall meeting, which I think is very important for each of you to have that opportunity. But first, let me just go over a couple of key points here. The bylaws serve as the foundation for how your community operates, not just amongst the members, you, shareholders, but also your board of directors. It's a legal document that contains a lot of legalese, and like Juanita mentioned, one of the major goals was to try to cut this document down to its simplest terms. That's why you see a lot of language has been stricken out. A lot of unnecessary language has been stricken out. A lot of outdated language has been stricken out. And that was one top goal. The other goal was to bring it in line with today's current laws. And as Juanita mentioned, this document has not been touched since 1994, and even at that time, it was outdated. And so one of the objectives was to try to bring it up to today's standards under current law, which has been done in this current draft. There are also some other areas that we brought in to make sure that you are aware of what the laws were with respect to what the board's obligations are to the corporation and to its members from a procedural standpoint. So even though the bylaws don't necessarily have to have certain laws in them that states exactly what the obligations of the board are, we brought a lot of that into this document. For example, you'll see provisions that make it clear what the board's obligations are to you for annual reporting requirements, how it distributes the annual budget report, how it distributes the annual policy statement, what has to be in those documents, et cetera. So with that, let me get into a couple of questions that have been brought up, from my understanding, after the ballot has been mailed with the draft bylaws. The first comment, or at least concern, that's been brought to my attention has to do with membership. And the current bylaws, specifically Article III, Section 1, describes membership, and there's a clause that is currently stricken from the draft that was mailed, which says, regardless of age. And what I'm talking about is the definition, or at least the ability of the board to grant membership or approve membership in the current bylaws is not restricted to age in the current bylaws. So the way they're currently drafted, the board could approve membership to somebody if they're less than 55 years old, if they're younger than 55. But that's not legal, in my opinion, and that's why it was stricken out of the current bylaws. And in the draft before you, membership is very clear that it's connected with qualifying for membership based on age and other qualifications, like financial requirements as well. And I'll tell you why we got to that point and why the draft was worded the way it is, and it has to do with the occupancy agreement, it has to do with the Civil Code and its definition of stock cooperatives, and it has to do with other sections in the current bylaws. So let me take a couple of baby steps here first. Again, to backtrack, what we're talking about is who can become a member in the community in United, someone that is eligible to sign an occupancy agreement. Anybody that can sign an occupancy agreement has to be able to exclusively occupy a manor. The only individual that can exclusively occupy a manor is someone that's 55 and older, because it's an age-restricted community. And so that's why we brought in line the definition of membership in the bylaws in line with the occupancy agreement and in line with current law. So with that, let's talk about the occupancy agreement. The occupancy agreement is very specific. If you read it, it contemplates and discusses throughout it the requirement to exclusively occupy a manor in connection with a membership to United. There's a sentence here, and I paused because I was looking for my sentence. Under general conditions of the occupancy agreement, it says, which all of you have signed, if you're members, "The member agrees to reside in, occupy, and use the dwelling unit in conformity with the age restrictions sanctioned by law." So right there, it tells you, and that's just one of many sections in the occupancy agreement that contemplates, I don't want to say owner occupancy, but just to simplify the terminology, owner occupancy. You're not all owners of the property. You have an ownership interest, because interestingly, in California, even though you just own a piece of paper as shareholders, and you have an exclusive right to occupy a manor, that does trigger an ownership interest. And that ownership interest in California is the right to exclusively occupy a manor. Now, when we're talking about ownership, the corporation, United, owns all the property in United. And let me just take you to a section in the Civil Code, which I think everybody really needs to understand, and if you're able to pull it on your own time and read it, it's pretty interesting. Section 4190 of the Civil Code actually defines what a stock cooperative is. California, there are not many around, but they are here, including United. And with respect to stock cooperatives, unfortunately, they've been lumped into this whole general category of homeowners' associations in California, condominium complexes, planned developments, single-family homes. It doesn't really fit, but the legislature not being interested in carving out a body of law just for stock cooperatives, because there really just aren't many of them, just threw you in the mix with homeowners' associations. And that's all encompassed within the Davis Sterling Act of the Civil Code. Well, under that act, under Section 4190, it actually defines what a stock cooperative is, and it defines it as a corporation that's organized under the laws of the state of California, in which all shareholders receive a right of exclusive occupancy in a portion of the real property, title of which is held by the corporation. So in order to be a stock cooperative, there has to be a corporation, which is United. The corporation has to own all the property, which United does, and the corporation has to have shareholders, which are you, that have an exclusive right to occupy the manor. So what that now brings us to is the current bylaws, which are not being changed with respect to what happens if a shareholder passes away. And this has become an issue of concern. That shareholder can dedicate that membership or that share to an heir. An heir can inherit that person's, the shareholder's, membership. If that heir doesn't qualify as a member, then they don't fit within the definition of a stock cooperative, because they can't exclusively occupy that manor. They can't comply with the occupancy agreement, because you heard me read with the occupancy agreement. It says, "The member agrees to reside in, occupy, and use the dwelling unit," and the heir can't qualify for membership. And so that's why, in a stock cooperative, that's an age-restricted community like United, it doesn't work to have the definition of a membership not linked to the requirement to be 55 and older. If we're in a condominium complex, for example, that's different. It's different, because we're not dealing with an occupancy agreement. We're not dealing with the definition of a stock cooperative. A condominium is a condominium. It's like a home. You just own it. There's no occupancy agreements, there's no stock cooperatives. So with that, that's why the change was made, and in years past, memberships have been approved to heirs, and there are, and I'm sure the board can comment on this or even staff, there are some heirs in the community that are under 55 that cannot occupy, that are subleasing. They are, they do exist, but that practice has stopped several years ago because of this legal requirement. And what's significant about this is that with respect to the definition of stock cooperative, in order to be a stock co-op, the shareholders have to have an exclusive right to occupy. If you're approving membership to individuals that don't have the exclusive right to occupy, it's threatening the vitality of your stock cooperatives. Also, in an age-restricted community, if you're shown to have, on record, members that are not age-qualified, it could threaten your age-restricted status, because in California, discriminating against age is illegal unless it's for senior housing. It's an exception. The exception requires any community that is for senior housing to verify and enforce the age restriction on a regular basis. If a community turns a blind eye and allows individuals to reside in the community that are less than 55, that age restriction can be taken away, and the gates could be open to anybody and everybody to move in. So you want to maintain and safeguard that restricted age restriction to maintain that throughout the years to come. So I believe that's all I have at this point. Are there any other issues you want me to hit on before we open it up? Before we open it up for comments, is there anything else the board wants me to touch on, or should we just go ahead and open it up?
The heir issue seems to be the biggest issue, so...
Hold on. Let me suggest this, because now all of a sudden, there's questions coming out. So maybe we should just go straight to the questions, open forum session of this town hall meeting. But one thing I didn't hit on, I kind of did, but maybe I can expand on it because of your questions. I mentioned before, there are heirs in the community, not many, but there are some, that were approved to membership, that are now subleasing because they cannot live in the community. They will continue to be allowed to do that. That can't be taken away from them. Because they've been allowed to do it, they're going to continue to be able to do that. But again, when this was identified and actually enforced by the board and the staff, that practice has not taken place for several years, and I think even more years. So with that, again, we're not going to shout and yell and talk over each other. We're going to have a nice, productive town hall meeting. There's mics, there's a line, we can all have an orderly discussion here. Maybe, again, the board, maybe if you want to make any comments, go ahead, but we should open it up as soon as you're done.
Is it on? Okay. If you remember or look at your escrow papers, I'm sorry, that's feedback. On page five, it says, "You must have an occupancy agreement assigned by each proposed transferee." That would be an heir. So they need an occupancy agreement signed by each proposed transferee. And the occupancy agreement says, "In order to reside, at least one of the occupants must be 55 years of age or older." As he said, on page three of your occupancy agreement, it says, two sentences here. "The member acknowledges and agrees that Laguna Woods Village is a senior citizen housing development, and therefore the residency in the dwelling unit is restricted to persons 55 years of age or older." "The member agrees to reside in, occupy, and use the dwelling unit, da-da-da." And so we have on the first page, it says, "If the occupancy agreement is being executed by a trustee as the member, the current beneficiary of the trust must be an occupant of the dwelling unit." Well, the link is broken. There is no 55-year-old. The link is broken. When you buy in and fill out all of these things as the first-time buyer, you fill out qualifications and your financial things, and you fill out an age thing, saying, "I am age 55, and I intend to reside in the unit." When you die, your people inherit this property, but they cannot reside in here. The link is broken. Member 55, which is you, no longer exists. So if they have Brother 55, or Heir 55, or Heir 37 wants to sell it to Aunt 55, and then she'll resell it to him when he gets old enough, that can be done. But otherwise, the link is broken, because there is no one 55 who can come into the unit and occupied. And for us, that means for a year before you can rent it out. So the link is broken, unless the heir is 55.
I'd also like to make the point that anything from these bylaws to the resolutions, operating rules that we pass are not retroactive. So we know that there are some cases in the community where this has happened before, because the board was lax, because somebody didn't catch it, whatever. So we can't take that away from the people who are already doing it. But we did, we passed a law, a rule, last August, saying children cannot buy for parents. The parents have to be on the stock certificate, not the children, who are underage, and that anybody who inherits and wants to keep the stock must qualify as a member and sign an occupancy agreement. Another of the operating rules that we have says that in order to sublet your unit, you have to be a qualified member with a signed occupant agreement. So all of these things are in different places, and what we have tried very hard in these new bylaws is to bring them all together so that they're in one place, and the bylaws agree with the occupancy agreement and with our operating rules.
So can I ask the board a question? If these proposed bylaws pass, the day after they pass, will anything change?
No.
Will any procedures or requirements change?
No. Because they are not granting the right to occupy to anyone now. They are making them follow the two, they have to apply, fill out these sheets that I was talking about. Look at your real sale package. They have to qualify financially, just like they were a new buyer. A transfer is just an opportunity to have this thing, okay? It means you don't have to buy it. It is already yours to own, but you cannot be a member because it does not transfer because you are not 55. Now, this is the way they have been interpreting it for the last few years. It was the original agreement. Somewhere along the line, someone fell off the truck and issued a few exceptions. Well, we are not falling off the truck. We've read these things, and we know what they say. So if, this does not take away your right, I mean their right, to sell the property. Is your, do you have gold in the floors of your closet? Do you have murals that you have painted on the wall of your family members? Is there anything this particular about your unit that, after renting it out for eight, nine, or 20 years, will be valuable enough that those people have to have your unit? Maybe so. That might be true for some of us, but for most of us, no. The financial benefit or opportunity is what they want.
All right, we're going to take questions out. Oh, I'm sorry. Steve?
I am the third member of the Governing Documents Committee, and I was asked to serve on that committee after my appointment to the board last September. And the committee had already been involved in this process of consolidating the bylaws to make them current. And as Juanita said, Juanita, Maggie, and myself, being the directors on the committee, we also had the benefit of three advisors on the committee, Bevan Strom, Mary Stone, and Barbara Copley, who are all very well-respected and known longtime residents here. And I was impressed with the way that the committee went through this document, word by word, line by line, week after week. And as we started to approach the end of last year, we actually started meeting twice a week, and our meetings would be three or four hours long. So, you know, there was a very concerted effort, and it was not sloppy, it was not flippant, and there was no agenda other than to consolidate, remove erroneous citing of Civil Code, which was no longer applicable, to create a table of definitions so that rather than have a reciting of the same language, which is several sentences long, on pages two and four and six and eight, that by using the definition of governing documents, that any time governing documents had to be clarified, you could just go to the definition page. Fortunately, in my life prior to moving here, my father had owned a cooperative in Chicago, so I was very familiar with what the structure of a cooperative is and how it works. And since I have been on the board, I have seen many people who don't understand that they do live in a co-op, that they think that they live in a homeowners' association, and therein lies a lot of the confusion. So I just wanted to make those remarks, because under no circumstances was the committee or any of the board members trying to do anything other than what was, in our opinion and working with our attorney, required by law, in restoring the application of our governing documents, which, for some years, had not been enforced properly.
You know, when we think about the idea of whether or not our heirs can inherit our property immediately when we pass away, the reason that's not been a challenge to me, doesn't worry me at all, is I'm aware of something that maybe not everyone is. I personally, I personally like to call it an extra layer of insurance when you live in a cooperative, and only when we live in a cooperative. My son and my daughter are not old enough. If my husband and I passed away tomorrow, they're not old enough to come in and qualify on the age restriction feature. They would have to decide to either keep it and pay the assessments for a few years, knowing in the long run it'd be a good investment, or sell it. But we have here, in United, as you know, one owner, one owner. And guess what? That owner owns what I would estimate to be more than $1 billion in assets, seven miles from the ocean, as the birds fly, here in Southern California. And if we have a terrible emergency where our mutual needs a lot of money to pay for repairs and bills and so forth without charging us a special assessment, the mutual, as the owner, can borrow money, probably at very low interest rate and a very large sum, to take care of these things, and maybe our assessments would go up, who knows, $20 a month, $100 a month, not $10,000, which happened twice to a neighbor of mine in another community where she lived in a condominium. That's what has appealed to my husband and I so much, that is a wonderful layer of insurance in place. And I just wanted to know, that's why, because I knew about all this ahead of time, and I want you to know, that's why it doesn't bother me. Only when you live in a cooperative and have one owner of all the valuable property do you have that extra gift, if you ever have to unwrap it.
Are there any other board members that have something, too?
Yes. Don?
Yeah, I would like to...
Your turn is coming. Your turn is coming. Don't be anxious.
I was going to say, I would like to hear from the residents.
Okay, all right. All right, there are two microphones down each aisle here. If you will line up, I need to have your name and your manor number.
Eileen Older, 610A. First of all, in respect to what you said, I'm sorry, the attorney, I think that one of the important words you said was, "in my opinion." Okay? The second thing I want to bring up, you talk about the right of occupancy. That allows you to occupy. It doesn't say you have to occupy. You have lots of rights that you don't have to take advantage of, so I would like to question your interpretation of that. There's also a difference between occupy, reside, and own. There's a difference there. So owning, that's what they, before, in fact, my mother bought from a woman who had the apartment for, excuse me, the unit for her grandmother. When the grandmother could no longer use it, she sold it. Okay? So she had the right to occupy, but she had her grandmother occupying it. And I really, Juanita Skilman just said, one of the board members just said, "You passed a rule." It seems you can pass rules whenever you want to suit yourselves, that the children cannot buy for their parents. That you just passed last year. I don't know that it was bought before the membership, that that rule could be, should be put into effect. That's a very important rule, and it sort of changes, if you ask me, the bylaws. The last thing I want to point out, and I don't have to tell anybody here, is that this board has gone under, around, over, any way you want to look at, to stop renting. It's an anti-renting board. And I think that when someone inherits a property, if they're 50 years old or 52 years... years old or whatever, if they want to have a few years to get the age requirement to reside, then they should be able to have that right. And I think your interpretation has all been to do away with the right to rent.
Great. Are we taking sides?
Yeah, I have a question. Under the... On page 13, section 2...
Name and manner, please.
Of what document?
Wait, name and manner first.
On the bylaws, the proposed bylaws. Do you guys have those?
Your name and manor number, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Cunningham, 748C. Page 13, section 2, paragraph B.
All right, what's your question?
So, under the old bylaws, it said if you could... The board could assess a fine, and the limit would be $500. That section has been deleted, which means there was no limit to the fine that the board can assess. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, then what is the limit?
Right now, it's still $500 for the first offense. If they keep doing, a resident keeps doing it, it doubles the second time and it can triple the third time. We have a schedule of fees that is approved every year and is included in your package that you get in October, November, with all of these, the information in it.
But it is removed from the bylaws, though.
Yes, it was.
Also, one other point. Page 16, section 4B. It says if you're going to have a meeting, you have to state to general nature with certain exceptions. And the old paragraph said approving a contract or transaction in which a director has a material financial interest. You would have to state that in the agenda of the meeting. Under the new bylaws, you don't have to. Could you please explain that?
It may not be stated in the bylaws, but it is in our operating rules, and it is in Davis Sterling that a director cannot have an interest in a contract that is voted on by the board. So we didn't feel we needed to repeat it again.
I'm voting no.
Okay, over here.
Roberta Burke, 933B. I came here...
I'm sorry, I didn't get the number?
933B? It's me?
Thank you.
I didn't come here to say what I was going to say, and I hope you're not going to hold it against me because I want to get out later what I came here to say, because this is a big bomb that has been dropped. And though I respect the amount of effort and time and work all of you have put in, what you're basically saying to us, and even though people have already voted, you're basically saying to us that all the boards, that Mr. Tibbetts and Maxine, and I think that's probably about it as long as I'm here, maybe Pat came in a little later, and all the attorneys that those boards had didn't know what they were doing. And we moved here with an understanding, and understandings may be on paper and written, and you know most of us don't read it, but I certainly have been a board follower to a great degree, and I see what changes and I see what goes on. And it has always been my understanding that a child under... A child, that an adult under 55 could buy a unit for their family. And all of a sudden, you're dropping a bomb about occupancy and not. I think there are certain issues related to just what Mr. Beaumont said today that need to be clarified for everyone, and that is, those of us that have lived here almost 20 years, and it was our understanding that this could happen, and I'm not speaking for me because I don't think that's going to happen for me, but it might. I don't know when my tomorrow is, and neither do you, and we're living here the last quarter of our life, hoping that we live in peace. We don't get it. We're always having to fight for something. At any rate, I think that it's important and incumbent upon you to explain to us, especially those who've lived here like myself, what is going to happen when my child is ready to inherit or my trust inherits? And there's a child wanting to move in here that may be underage. How is all that going to work? Because you're changing things right under our noses. You may say it's in there, but none of those other people with their boards have ever brought any of this up and no other attorneys have. I think what we need to do is for all of us to get out what we have to say. I think a hold should be put on this election. I think that it is an illegal election because it doesn't really agree with our bylaws, it doesn't agree with Robert's rules, and it doesn't agree with the Davis Sterling Act because the crossed-out version should have been with what people were voting for. This was not a total revision. This was just changes or amendments. A total revision, you could eliminate the crossed-out version, but that's another issue that I was going to talk later. I think you should hear us. I think you should put a stop to it. I think you should make it very clear to everybody. I have noticed, and I've said this before, Juanita, that we come to these meetings and all of a sudden, we're being chipped away. Our lifestyle, what we know, what we can do, our rights are being chipped away, little by little by little by little by little, and that's only in the last few years. It didn't happen when they were board members with other boards. It didn't happen with the other attorneys. I don't understand what's going on, and I'm speaking because I think that I pay a lot more attention to board meetings, although I haven't been there these last six months for another reason, which we can get to. But I think most of these people have not necessarily been to a lot of board meetings over 18 years. And I think that it is incumbent, and you owe it to all of us, to get every single little bit of understanding that we may need under this thing, including trusts and all that stuff. You can't just come along and change our whole lifestyle and our thoughts. We've put all kind of money into these buildings for this corporation, and now it can't go anywhere?
I'll respond to the form of the ballot that was used to be mailed out as far as the difference between the draft bylaws that was mailed without the lines and the clean copy that was sent out. The Davis Sterling Act civil code is very, very specific as to the procedure required to solicit a vote of the members to change bylaws or any other governing document that has to be approved by the members. The exact document has to be sent out, the ballot that's subject to approval. So if we sent out the red line draft with the ballot and it was approved, we'd have to use that red line ballot with all the strike-throughs for years to come. So that's why we sent out the clean copy and then made the strikeout copy available to everybody through the website.
That doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Roberta. Okay. I just want to...
We need another attorney here, too.
Excuse me.
Hello?
I'd like to respond. Thank you. At almost every meeting, I mention the occupancy agreement, the bylaws, or some of our other rules. It is something I do whenever I am asked about anything or where I give a report. I keep urging residents to read their documents. I would say that some of you don't even know where your escrow documents are. You might. They might be in a safety deposit box somewhere, which means they're not read regularly and were probably never really read for understanding. And the occupancy agreement and all of these things that we're talking about were in there when you bought it. When you bought it and you signed, they were there. The fact that somebody didn't follow them a few years ago for a little while does not mean they're null and void and wrong. We are simply following the rule. The 35 mile per hour sign is up on the street. It doesn't matter if the police aren't policing on Tuesdays, they can still give you a ticket on Wednesday, even though somebody else drove 55 on Tuesday. So as long as it's our rule, and it was our rule, then we have the right to enforce it. We're trying to keep this a residential, age 55 owner occupied, which makes it more valuable. Thank you.
All right, on this side?
Yeah, my name's Lionel Croton. I'm at 2077A. You know, basically, I have to agree with the people that have been talking tonight. I read this thing when I got it. I had no red line. There was no notice in the package or that in all the bump I keep getting from Laguna Woods Village patting themselves on the back about all the great communication that they're doing to tell me that there was a red line that I could have printed off. I've got it tonight, and I thank you for that, but like this meeting, a little short notice. I mean, the meeting I only heard about by email on Monday night at 16:45, and we're now, two days later, three days later, standing here. So not a lot of time for people to get themselves organized to just come and sit, not even to talk. But anyway, you did supply the red line, and I appreciate it. My overall feeling when I'm reading this, frankly, is that the board... I mean, I appreciate all the work you folks have done and that you are, and it's a thankless job and I don't want it, but it seems to me that what you're doing in the document is saying management will advise over and over again. Jeff, I didn't count how many times we've said it in there, but it appears. And what I'm seeing and sensing is that we are starting to allow, yet again, the management company who we own, who we pay, we, in fact, are your bosses, right? We're shareholders. And I just feel like the board... And I get the timing, you know? I mean, who wants to spend their life doing this garbage? But you can't continually ask management to tell you, give you advice on how you should do stuff unless you've got the right, right people in management. Brad seems to be professional and okay, although he's writing a lot. I'm getting the sense that at the director level, there was never any changes. The same people that I saw seven years ago, who gave me a lot of headaches when I was just trying to buy a share, if you will, are still there, still doing the same thing. I think, Maxine, you may have said earlier something about, you know, well, we've got to get the financial information and all of this stuff. I've always had trouble understanding that. I mean, it seems to me that if this fellow here said, "Hey, Lionel, I like your unit. I'll give you a half a million dollars for it," and I said, "It's a better number than I thought it was worth. I'll take it," why does the board care? You know, if he gives me a bucket of money and I take the money, why can't it just be a done deal for the money? Why do you need to see that he has $500,000 plus 120 in liquid assets before he can be a member? I mean, if I was buying a house, I pay $500,000, the guy gives me a deed, and it's my problem from there on. Now here, I admit, we have homeowners' expenses, and that also is a big issue. They want... Because a friend of mine just bought a unit in here, almost didn't. He almost got fed up and walked away. Why? He runs a big-ish company, and they wanted financial statements of his company. Well, frankly, I'm on the board of the company, and I know something about financial statements and have trouble reading his. So how can a couple of sort of petty bureaucrats in the management office get ahold of 70 pages of financial documents and know that this guy either has money or doesn't? And who cares? It's $600 a month, more or less, and that's not, in today's world, a lot of money. And there are better ways to safeguard ourselves. If that is a problem, that we're going to get bad debts and, you know, this fellow who gave me the half a million dollars doesn't want to pay $600 a month to live there. One, in your bylaws, you have a right to take the unit and do a quick foreclosure. Two, you have the right to lots of fees if you do this. I just saw somebody's note that they had not paid, and there was about $5,000 in service fees added to 18 months of arrears. I mean, no excuse for the arrears, I'm not saying that, but it's not for nothing. But all you'd have to do, frankly, is get a letter of credit from every member or a bond, or tell them to pay a year in advance, and you're protected. Why do you need... You know, we seem to have to open our Kimonas all the time to people who are, you know, I don't feel are well-equipped to look at my open Kimona.
All right. We have quite a few people that want to speak, so Lionel, I think we'll finish up there.
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Over here.
Hi, I'm Dr. Elizabeth Romano, 2035A. I come here also as a representative of the United Nations, and my area of concern is elders. And I'm very concerned about the lack of transferability of property for myself, and I am offended by having a 10-year-old escrow document showing up to me and said, "Well, you can't do this now," because I didn't know which of my five grandchildren I wanted to inherit this. So I'm very unhappy and very concerned, I'm a lobbyist, about the rights that are to be taken away from my property transferability, and my vote is no, and my mention to the governor and also to the United Nations is this doesn't look good for us. Thank you.
All right. Just one comment on there. We are taking no asset away from anybody. We are just saying who can live here. Okay, over here.
My name is Joan Williams. My unit is 2093D. On August 8th of 2016, the corporation executed a document with me, a stock assignment separate from certificate, in which I put my unit into my living trust. And my living trust is now the member. I'm the trustee while I live of my living trust. But the attorney has transferred the said membership on the books of the within-name corporation with full power of substitution in the premises. This was less than a year ago that this was done by the bureaucrats in the community center and who were knowledgeable about what they were doing. Now, if I want to leave, if in my trust, the beneficiary of my trust are my grandchildren, who at this time are not yet even 35 years old, what is their position if I die next week?
You sell your unit and divide it between them.
It's not my unit. It's my trust unit.
Your stock.
The share that's in your trust would go your successor trustees or your beneficiaries.
So then my beneficiaries will, in fact, even though they're 35, they will...
They cannot qualify for membership.
But they get the full value of it.
They get the full value of your unit.
From whom?
That's your asset.
From whom?
From whomever they sell it to.
Well, there's also provisions that the corporation will, in fact, take it over.
No, no. We have the right of first refusal. We almost never use it. That has been in our documents forever, and it protects the corporation. And the only time that I know it's ever been used has been used in a foreclosure. And what happens is, instead of selling it on the courthouse steps for pennies on the dollar, the mutual has the right to buy it. And we have three outside appraisers that tell us what it's worth.
It said one in the document. It said one appraisal.
Okay, over here, please.
So just to make it clear, in the existing bylaws, section 6, on page 10, the existing bylaws that are in effect now are very clear that if you have your membership in a trust, for example, and pass away, the beneficiaries, if that's who the membership is going to, the beneficiaries, they have then that asset, and they can take the membership that you had in that trust and either qualify for membership if they're age-qualified, and if they're not, then they can sell it, and they recover the proceeds. They receive the proceeds from that sale. If, for some reason, the corporation exercises its right of first refusal, that's section B of section 6 in your current bylaws, then the corporation has to pay your beneficiaries the fair market value of that share.
Who... You know, in other words, the corporation can exercise their right before my heirs? The beneficiaries of my trust can exercise their right? Yeah.
They have 90 days to qualify for membership. And if they don't qualify for membership, then the only choices are, number one, they keep it as an asset and... then the only choices are, number one, they keep it as an asset and pay the assessments every month with nobody there, or they sell it, at fair market value, whatever they can get for it.
But they can't rent it.
Three appraisers, independent appraisers, not the company, not the board, three independent appraisers tell us what the fore market, market value is.
But they cannot rent it as an asset to someone who would qualify financially and age-wise.
No, our rules say that in order to sublet your unit, you have to be a qualified member with a signed occupancy agreement. If they don't qualify to do that, then they cannot sublet it. Okay, over here.
Okay. I've listened to you.
Name and a man and number, please.
John G. 877B Avonia Sevilla. I've listened to you. And so far, all I've seen is people from your side shoveling smoke. At the very least, if it was the other thing, it would have substance and smell. Now, I object to the way this was handled. One, in my experience, when you make such substantial changes, you always send out both, the lined-out copy and the corrected copy. Cost of doing so notwithstanding, because if we're not worth the extra money to spend to fully inform us, then why should we vote yes? Two, this, in my past experience, has been a tactic used by authorities and governing bodies to hide things they want to do that are not kosher. Not that I'm saying that you guys are doing it, but it is a tactic that I have experienced dealing with government. Three, it's on the internet. You have a body of members who don't have computers. If they do have computers, they may not have printers. Even if they have printers and computers, some of these people's eyesight is impaired and can't stare at a screen. So I take it as an act of arrogance and insensitivity to say, "Hey, it's on the internet." I'm voting no, because, and there's no reflection on Maggie that I know and, and trust, but the past experience with this board in general has not inspired trust or confidence. And that the safest thing to do right now is to vote no, and you, if it's important enough for you, you send it out again properly. Last comment. We need to change that restriction you have. It's, if it isn't in the bylaw, it's a rule that you control. And that, or that you just say that if a member dies, and their heirs are under the age, they may not occupy, but they may rent it out.
Over on this side.
I'm Norma Godfrey, and I'm 939A, Avonita Mallorca. And I, too, have a trust. And I'm concerned about my heirs, hoping I don't die for a long time, but I have no choice in that. If my heirs are of age when I die, but for some reason they can't immediately occupy, why must they wait a whole year before they can rent until they can occupy? I, I don't understand that. Can you give me some clarity on that?
Go ahead, Maggie.
Why that rule?
We are not an investment community, okay? It is, it is a community where you buy to reside. If you read your paperwork, as I've said, I keep showing you and telling you, if you read your paperwork, you will see the link is, they must be 55. If they're not 55, or they don't choose to reside here, if they are 55, the link with the community is broken. They may sell it. They may not lease it out, because the leasing only depends on a one-year residency by the owner or member before it can be leased. So, so that is not, I'm sorry, I didn't yell while you were talking. So these, these are your choices. You have the choices that you have. We didn't create anything new, I will tell you, whether you vote no or yes. This is not new. That's why I keep waving these papers at you and urge you, I urge you to look at your occupancy agreement, and I urge you to look at your escrow paperwork. And then also, you can look up some of the laws that we've cited, but I'll give you those later if you want.
Okay, maybe, go ahead.
You have, your heirs have the choice. They have a valuable piece of property, okay? They cannot occupy it, so they can sell it.
I'm saying, I guess you didn't understand. My heirs probably would very much like to, but if I died suddenly, they're working, and they may not be able to immediately occupy. And that's why I'm saying, if, maybe in a year's time, they can get it together and retire and come, but at the moment, they can't. So if they, they can't rent it, they're having to come up with my assessment, my monthly assessment for a whole year, which adds up to quite a lot of money. And so I'm wondering why the, the year.
That, that is a different, that is a different topic. That is not a change in these bylaws. That, that's been...
That's been a, that's been a...
That's been a, that's been a prior resolution before.
It's an operating rule.
Operating rules and...
Do you know why?
That is not to do with these bylaws. The one-year occupancy, in order to rent out, is a prior law.
We're talking about bylaws now.
Okay, that's been a rule.
Operating rules that are passed resolution through the board, every single one goes out for 30-day member comment. We don't just rush things through. You need to pay attention to your governance. You need to either come to or watch our, our board meetings on TV. All of the things are downloadable. I'm sorry, you're right. Everybody does not have a computer. But we have 6,323 members. We can't hand-deliver a copy to everyone. Even mailing things of all of the resolutions, et cetera, was very, very cost-prohibitive. We expect you, as members, if you have an interest, and take the interest, to let us know. Yes, an operating rule can be changed, and if that's what you desire, then you need to talk to us about that, but that has nothing to do with the bylaws that we're talking about today. Okay, over here.
I'm Mildred Hicks from 906N.
906A.
Could you tell me, the papers that you sent out for us to write yes or no on, did it have this in it? I did not see it, and I read it all the way through. I showed it to my attorney, Mr. Black, and he said, "Not legal." So I don't know what kind of attorney you have, but he's a darn good attorney.
All right, over here. I'm sorry, these lights are so bright, it's difficult for me to tell if there's somebody over there. If there's not, so, is there somebody else over here?
Yeah. My name's Terry May, 232B. So I have a couple of questions when I was reading the red line. The first one was that the board has the right to keep a person taking stock certificate from putting their trust, putting it in their trust, which would say to me that then I'm purchasing a property, I want it in my trust, and you're saying, "Not necessarily."
No. It's perfectly legal, perfectly acceptable, and we do it every single day.
I know you do it, but in, in the red line, it actually says that the board has the option to not accept the trust on the stock certificate.
Has the option, and it has to be a special kind of trust.
Okay. Then, my second question would be that you say that the board has the first option to take the property. So I die, my children are also under 55. So they want to sell. The board has the first option. If the board takes that option, it says the appraised value minus repairs. Well, let's talk about Laguna Woods Village and the co-ops. The pipes are bad. Everyone knows that. Everyone's home reeks from pipes and trees, roots getting in the pipes. The electrical panels are out of date and not up to code. There are a major amount of problems with these units. So when you take a unit, if you exercise that option, you've now changed it to say plus repairs, is there a limit on the repairs that you can take out of the assets that you're going to pay the heirs?
The repairs would only apply to something that whoever was living in it did that changed it from its original status.
But it doesn't say that. It just says plus repairs.
That would be the repairs, if there were any.
I think it should be clarified.
And it, it doesn't talk about the alterations, that everybody, if you upgrade your unit and put in alterations, if they are legal, and if they have gone through the, the variance process and have been approved by the board, they're not going to do it. But then we do get some where they've just done it on their own, and they are not up to code. And if so, then there's a repair that we have to do to bring it up to code.
But what keeps the corporation from saying repairs are the pipes underneath, which are bad and everything else?
We, the mutual, own the property. You do not own the property.
I understand that, but I'm asking you, when, if you were to exercise the option of taking a unit and not letting the heirs have it, when it says repairs, why is there no clarification of repairs? Because as we know, these were built in 1963, and repairs can be endless. So that's my question.
So the, the bylaws are very clear as to United's authority to exercise its right of first refusal, which means it has a right, under certain circumstances, to purchase your membership, not to take anything, but to purchase. And it's in Section 6, Paragraph B, and it only exists if you, as a member, intend to leave the corporation, and you provide United with notice of your intent to leave. As soon as United receives your written notice of intent, it has 30 days to purchase your membership after determining the fair market value of your, your manor. As far as the repair question goes, United can't charge you as a member for repairs to property that United's responsible for. So if your pipes are bad, and you're selling your manor through escrow, United can't say, "We're going to charge you the cost to repair those pipes," because United is the responsible party for those pipes. But if there's damage inside the manor caused by you as the occupant, then United can charge you for the cost to repair that damage that you caused to the inside of that manor. So that's what the repairs refer to, not property that United's responsible for, property that you as a member's responsible for.
Okay, Steve.
To, to put the repairs in another light, as Mr. Beaumont has put forward, we have monthly meetings where we have matters be, come before the executive board, many times which have to do with damage restoration. So I'll give you just one example of what the repairs lead to. A resident puts in a washer and dryer without filing for a permit within the community or with the city. So it's an illegal alteration. And in the conduct of the use of the washer and dryer, the water does not drain properly into the sewage system, and now damages the walls and the structure in between. An affected, an adjacent unit is now affected on the other side of that common wall, and staff is made aware of it. And they go out and they make an investigation, and they find out that there's water damage. Companies are called in to remediate that damage that was caused by the illegal alteration. And then the resident who was responsible for that damage is delivered a bill. So what the lady just spoke of, what, on the, on the repairs, they would only be repairs that were, that had been necessitated by an alteration, whether legal or illegal, that had to be rectified to the corporation's property to bring it back into a habitable and a code-conforming situation.
All right, over on this side.
My name is Joan Ligon, 144B, Avonita Mallorca. I'm thinking this meeting is much after the fact. The ballots were out for some time. People have already voted, and now there's this informational meeting, and I'm sure that some people are going to be changing their mind. I just needed to voice that feeling that things were backwards, in my opinion. Thank you.
Over here.
I would like a question answered first, if you may, and then...
Roberta, you have already spoken. Let's let everybody else speak first.
Nobody was here when I got up to speak. That was why I got up, but I will wait.
You have people waiting. Thank you.
And then you'll call the meeting to a close. And again, my questions won't get answered.
Right, over here. That side hasn't spoken. Okay, I'm sorry. As I say, I can't see very well. So yes, you haven't spoken.
Marguerite Mason, 413D, Avonita Castilla. My question is for Mr. Beaumont. As we're observing here today, some residents see an inconsistent and arbitrary application of rules. Could the current method of administering purchases and leases put United, VMS, and GRF at risk for a lawsuit by an unhappy resident?
Good question. Very good question. In what we do amongst the board, every day is to manage risk and to identify a risk. And there's certainly risk that exists all the time from unhappy, dissatisfied members that could sue any day, because all that takes is a check to the courthouse to pay the filing fee and a lawsuit. But the current structure that you have now, and the proposed new bylaws that are in place with your existing resolutions and policies, are protecting United, and they're not creating more risk. And they're protecting the members as well. The rental issue that comes up anytime we're in this room, or even in the boardroom, whenever resolutions are proposed, look, I'm just a lawyer. I just guide the board. I guide my client, the corporation. When the topic of rentals comes up and subleasing, that's a, that's a philosophical issue, as to whether a community wants to be member-occupied, or if you want to open the floodgates to members serving as landlords, and the, the implications that come with that. That's all up to you all to decide, not me. But to answer your question, the current governance and structure that's in place absolutely does not create any unreasonable risk to United or its members.
Thank you for your answer.
Mary Stone, 356C.
Mary Stone, 356C. I was on the governing docs committee as one of the advisors. And when I look out at this crowd, I see that there is a big problem. And the big problem is you do not understand what living in a cooperative is all about. Ladies and gentlemen, you signed a proprietary lease. That proprietary lease is for you to occupy a unit. It is not an investment. It is not an asset for your beneficiaries. It is a lease to occupy a unit. And consequently, the owner of the property is the corporation. You have member equity, which is a personal asset. It is not real property. And I think the big problem we have with United is the fact that real estate people are selling memberships, transfers of membership. It is a membership. It is not a piece of property. And that's what you don't seem to understand. And in our particular cooperative, it is age-restricted. Age-restricted means, as Jeff mentioned earlier, you need to be 55. So, the only people who can sign the occupancy agreement is somebody who is 55. So, how can your under-aged beneficiaries, and I have children, and one is old enough and one is not old enough? And my understanding was, hey, maybe if I live here long enough, and I have, then they will be able to retire here if they choose. But for the most part, it is for me to live here. That's why I bought here, is for me to live here, not for my kids to live here. It's not for me to tell them where to live. And it's, and you need to understand what you bought. You bought, what you bought was a membership. You did not buy property. I don't know why that is so hard for people to understand, except for the fact that you bought it from a real estate agent. Not that I have anything against real estate agents, really. But you should have bought it from a stockbroker. That is not true.
All right, over here.
I am Donna Jean Trenary, and I'm in 884 via Mendoza. And I just have to respond to this, if I may. We real estate agents explain that this is not a good community to invest in, whether you buy a co-op or a condo. It's not an investment. It can be an investment, you can think of it like that. But in reality, it's probably your last home. We don't have enough appreciation in here at any one given time. And it goes, it's more flat than it is on the outside. So, when you're going to purchase in Laguna Woods Village, you think of it as your home that you would like to have and have it the way you would like it to be for your last days. If you're thinking of it an investment, I'll show you a piece of property on the outside. So, that, I believe that most of us realtors look at it that way. And we coach, we totally coach the clients. Now, I'm here because I was looking at the paper today, and there wasn't anything on where this was being held. Am I the only one that has said something, or have you heard it a few times? I'm sorry. Okay. And then, my other concern is, is that I would like to see that even if one is 30 days past due on their HOA assessment, that they have a possibility of being able to be on the board. So what? That's only 30 days, maybe 60. But if they pay the bill, so what? If they eventually pay it. So, I would like to see that be updated to where it wouldn't be so biased. And I had one other thing, but I guess I've forgotten that. Thank you so much.
Well, I hope everybody understands that we operate, our only source of revenue are the association dues that you pay every month. So, when people don't pay, that makes it very difficult for us to stick to our budget and run the village, which is huge. We need to make sure that those assessments are paid. And usually, the only way that can be done is if there is a fine, or if you are way behind, we put a lien on it so that we are sure, as a corporation, that we're going to have the money. We sympathize with many of the people. We do payment plans. We try every opportunity that we have to work with our residents. But we need to have those assessments. And they're lower than anybody else around here. You go to any of these properties and their assessments are much higher, and they always have, they keep having special assessments. We've never had a special assessment. And so, what you're paying, both to us and the assessment for GRF, basically pays for your right to live here comfortably and to have the amenities and to have, in a co-op, our people do maintenance and landscaping and a lot of the other things where if you had a single-family home, you would have to do on your own. And I think Mary brought it up there, there you really need to know the difference between a co-op and a condo. And if you wanted to buy real property and have a deed of trust to it, you needed to buy a condo. That's not what a co-op is.
Why cannot this change?
Okay, do I have any other? All right, Roberta? What's your question?
Uh, sorry. My question is, I have heard the expression, and Juanita, you have said it to me many times personally about my own personal stuff, "Your grandfather, don't worry." I would like to know now, under this whole nuth bomb that was dropped today by Mr. Beaumont, if my, one of my children of age inherits my unit, but can't move in tomorrow with six months, he lives in LA and has a practice, and he needs a little time, is he allowed to rent it in the meantime?
No.
No. So, when you said to me, "Grandfathered," what were you referring to?
We're saying it's not retroactive. So, if you have somebody now who, four years ago, as a case in point, because this came up to me this week, five years ago, when he was 40, he inherited his grandmother's unit. And at that time, he was allowed to become a member, and he has sublet it all of the last five years. We are not going to, and he said, "Are you going to take my property and make me sell it?" No. It's retroactive so that it's everything going forward. But that doesn't mean if you have a trust at this time with somebody in it, that that is grandfathered. Anything going forward will be under these rules. Anything that happened in the past, we're not going to go back and redo.
Just for clarification, I seem to remember that Mr. Beaumont made the statement two board meetings ago, I think that's when I was there, that this doesn't affect anybody now. The changes that you talked about at that meeting would not affect anyone who's living here now. And I walked away thinking about being grandfathered. So, what has changed since?
My comment was about what Juanita just mentioned. Anybody now that's subleasing will continue to be able to sublease.
But not in the future.
Oh, I see.
If you are not subleasing now.
Right. So, if they're in the process of it, in other words, when that leasing leaves, they can still continue?
Yes.
Well, where does that make sense? But I guess nothing makes too much sense. My other important question is, just, you can't, whatever is on the books is on the books. And I do appreciate all the time that you guys have put in. However, we put in time too, in living here and talking to people. And after 18 years, and people are living here longer than I am, you see what goes on. You see, you hear, you watch, you anticipate. You make plans for when you're not here. For all of those of us that have done that, how on earth can you decide now to all of a sudden decide that Mr. Beaumont thinks this is not right? I mean, like, why isn't there a discussion for us to hear? Not that I don't trust you, but we've lived here so long to see you, can't just come up, there've been lawyers before you. Nobody has ever, ever, in all the years, and I assume that's why that half of the board has nothing to say, because they lived through all these other attorneys. These four people over here are the newest of all the board members.
Okay, Roberta, I think you've made your point. I have to disagree with you because...
But I think we, I think you owe us an explanation. Don't you think we deserve an explanation? You're changing our lives financially and physically. And I don't think, I would like to see a show of hands, who read the crossed-out lines?
I'm sorry, Roberta, your time's up, please.
All right, over here. Name and manner of number?
My name's Wayne Palma, 817C. Again, thank you for the time you invest here. Now, I've got a question. I really don't know, I'm not an attorney, but the board owns the property, correct?
No. The mutual.
Excuse me, the mutual owns the buildings, correct?
Correct.
Now, I own a stock certificate.
Right. So do we.
Okay, and you own your own stock certificates?
Just like you.
I understand that. Why is the stock certificate tied directly to ownership?
Why does it do what? Membership, the occupancy agreement.
Now, for every, for every 100,000 active adult homes, 55 and above, for every 100,000-plus in this, in the United States, we have one co-op. Especially in California, there's only three communities in all of California that have co-ops. Are they all wrong in that they can't live there, they can own it? They can't live there until they're 55? Are they all wrong? I don't understand this. Now, I'm 150% behind you. I completely agree, we need to keep out investors. We need to keep out renters. I'm 150%. It was a 10-year battle here to get that approved. I understand the new rule that you move in, you buy the home, because so many people lied on the application, saying, "I'm going to buy this home from my mom." The next day, they put it up for rent or do whatever they want. I agree with you 100%. We've got to keep those investors out. But this looks to me, what we're doing here is tying back to that new rule, which is less than a year old, that you cannot live, you cannot rent out your home until you live in the home for one year. But what the heck? If I pass away, my children are not even close to living here. And for the lady who thinks this is not an investment, the values are going to go down in value or stay the same, I will sign a contract right now and buy your home in 20 years for the price you want today. But my children can't live here. They should be allowed to rent the home based on me living here more than a year, two years, 10 years. This is what this is about. You are all forcing my children to sell this property unless they want to pay the HOA fee and the property taxes for one, two, 10, 20 years. I don't have any kids, I don't have any heirs that are even close to 55. They should be allowed so that once they get to be in that age, 55 and above, they can move in here. There's a lot of second, third generation people living in here. You're taking away my right, my children's right to live here. It's a heck of an investment. And if you, if, I could buy a home, if I sell my home today, or my stock certificate today, and my children come in 30 years later, 20 years later, they're not going to be able to afford to come into Orange County, seven miles as the bird flies to the beach. I understand, keep out the investors, but you're going overboard here trying to stop all renters.
This is not a new rule. This is not a new rule. Let me ask you, and all of you, each of you, when you purchased here, did you think, "Oh, I'm just occupying this so I can give it to my kids?"
Yes.
Or did you say, "I want to live in Laguna Woods Village where I can do this, and this, and this, and this, and I am 55." And when you failed to read your documents and agreements and you find out now that you misunderstood...
Can I finish? You mentioned, five years ago, you weren't allowed to rent here, wasn't that correct? Then we changed the rules.
Excuse me, you're out of order, your three minutes are up. The board is trying to respond to you.
We've not been three minutes, no. What was changed in 2013 was whether it could be leased a sublet for six months or for 12 months.
Right.
That's all.
Was the period of the leasing.
And that particular resolution that went through, that was basically from the community, had qualifiers as part of that resolution. And qualifier 15 that was voted on at that time said, "You must be a qualified member with a signed occupancy agreement in order to sublet." Over here.
Hi. My name is CJ Wanzar, 697C. Couple of things. First, a comment to Maxine. Heirs are not buyers, they are inheriting. Okay? So, if I were to die and my heir wanted to rent until they could be qualified, why is there going to be a one-year? It makes no sense because we've already served all that. But I'm just going to move on because I just wanted to really say, heirs are not buyers, okay? Our heirs aren't coming in as an investment. There are heirs. And to be honest, our family has been shareholders for 36 years. My sister and I, when we inherited, decided we really wanted to keep this in the family. My oldest is 25. I honestly do not think that I'm going to make it 30 more years because I'm pretty old. I was an old mom. I hate the idea to think that my child could not inherit. And my parents, when they bought in 1981, always thought this was something for the family. And my father, he was literally on the payroll on the day he died. He worked security, he worked gates, he collected laundry out of boxes, he worked fire marshal. He loved this place. And he would roll over in his grave to think that you people can't let somebody keep a property and rent it in order to cover the costs until they can live there. I really have a problem with that. I have something, and by the way, yes, I voted, I voted no. Something slightly different, I need to get out because I heard this from leasing, and I've never heard it from anyone else. And I asked leasing, "Please write me back and tell me where this came from, what's the resolution, what's the rule, whatever." And they wrote back and said, "Well, we don't have anything in writing yet." So, this is what I'm asking about. Supposedly, you're changing this, the qualifiers or the resolution, so people have to rent not a minimum of 30 days, but 90 days? And I have never heard a thing about it, except from leasing with no background, no backup. And Jeffrey Beaumont, you told us in 2016, when the board tried to pull the wool over our eyes, you told us that this was voted by the majority and the qualifiers cannot be changed to be made more restrictive without a vote of the shareholders. You did say that. I don't remember if it was January, February, March. I think it was even in the letter you sent out, which I have too many stacks to actually have found it. But, so, I'm really troubled about that. And I'm very troubled that our board is not more transparent. Okay? Not everybody is here and has access to the TV to watch the community. Because when I have a renter, I'm not there. So, even if I'm only three and a half miles away, I can't watch it. Not everything ends up being put up online because when I've tried to go and find it, I can't. I had problems with financials this year. I couldn't get the information, not even from the head of the committee. So, we need, we have internet. We need more stuff out there. We need every document available for us, even if we have to log in because we don't want to give it to everybody. I understand that. But I would like someone to please address to me why the qualifiers were made more restrictive, why I'm being told that, now, I'm out of luck and I can't rent September and October because my regular Canadian people are coming early in November this year. So, I've got money I'm losing, and I don't appreciate it. And I would like to know about that.
I have to disagree just a little bit. The resolution that the qualifiers are attached to, say in very plain language, these can be changed, updated, nullified at any time by any board. That right is in there.
Said they could not be more restrictive without a vote. Maybe he was wrong.
I think he was talking about something else. I think he was talking about something else. Okay, we have a question over here. That, again, is one of the qualifiers that we changed because we are having a problem with vacation rentals. Airbnbs, vacation rental by owner, people coming in for a week, people renting out for-
That's not gonna make a difference.
Two weekends and that sort of thing. So, that was just one of the reasons why that qualifier was changed.
That's absolutely ridiculous. The third and the towers only have a sixty-day minimum requirement, and you go to ninety. And you're just sucking the lifeblood out of me.
Juanita?
Sorry, yes.
Janie, I think you were next.
I just wanted to make a comment that if you are with an heir under fifty-five, and they move in here, and they have children, do you wanna see all these children underage running around?
All right, Maxine, you had a comment?
Yes. I'm thinking that when we talk about qualifiers, I've been here in the village now, golly, almost the day my husband turned fifty-five, we came down here to pick out a home. We knew we wanted to live here. We didn't wanna leave the nicest part of the state and go somewhere else. And so, I've been here twenty-three, almost twenty-four years now. And one qualifier that I really like, that I'm really interested in, is the way we, by having the financial requirements for someone to become a member, we're protecting that member from disaster possibly later on. People have asked, through the years, I've been on the board before, some of you know, and people have asked, you know, "Why don't you lower the amount? You know, we can sell homes faster." By the way, we outsell most of Orange County consistently. But anyhow, why don't we lower the qualifiers, the qualifying amount? Like I say, I'm focusing on that, the amount you have to have to be able to buy a stock certificate. And I'm thinking of when we had, for a period of time there, a lot of people way overdue on their assessments, which we don't tend to have right now. Isn't that right, Pat?
Yes, that's correct.
We do really well right now. Our qualifiers were too low. And here, people were moving in in their seventies, early eighties, and after ten or fifteen years, outliving their savings, you know, whatever happens, you all know what it can be. They find out they can no longer afford it. They can't afford that monthly assessment. And now, they're at a very uncomfortable age to try to move, make a major change. And I met some of these people, and it's really sad. And you can get help for them temporarily, but not permanently as a member of a board. It takes family, it takes all kinds of support. So, that's a qualifier I'm very interested in, that we keep our financial requirements high enough that it, hopefully, we never know for sure, do we? But hopefully, it indicates that all my neighbors will be able to stay my neighbors. They'll be able to afford to live here. I don't want anyone crushed ten, twelve years after that member moves in. Thank you.
All right, I believe we're on, oh, sorry, Andre?
I just want to, I just want everybody to know that the government document committee did a fantastic job. They did a really hard looking at these things. Although they are something that may not be perfect, but I want everybody to recognize that the government documentation do a good job. And I hope that I can get applause from people, say, "Yes, thank you very much, doing a good job." However, I do have a few questions here. First one is, some information removed from bylaw change, bylaws, and although they exist in the resolution and in the occupancy agreement side, I do wanna point out that bylaw change is very difficult. It requires the whole community to vote on that. But the resolution occupancy agreement, they don't require. They require just the board to approve for that. So, the threshold has reduced. Things can be changed based on board's decision, rather than based on the community's decision. So, that's one thing I wanna point out. The second thing is, I have a few residents came to me and said, "We voted yes, because the board and everybody has ensured us there's no major changes. And so, I vote yes. But now, facing all these controversies, I wanna vote no. What am I gonna do?" Okay, so, if I may get some answer from the legal expert, is there any way we can help them out and help them change their vote? Because they got erroneous information, different information, and now something has changed their mind.
Once a vote is cast, a vote is cast. You can't pull it back. And Andre, the occupancy agreement is a governing document, the same as bylaws. Any changes to the occupancy agreement requires the same secret ballot of six thousand three hundred and twenty-three manners.
I would like to reiterate, this, the points that we have been discussing for several hours now is not a change. It is the thirty-five mile per hour speed sign over here that has been enforced many years, was not enforced for a couple of years, and now is being enforced again. All right, I'll tell you. The mother fifty-five requirement, which is what I call it, for which the unit is purchased, we are not changing that. We are simply enforcing that. It is already in the paperwork and on the books. It was enforced for many years, and then a couple of years, they did not. We are enforcing it again, and we have been enforcing it for the last year or so. So, you can vote no if you like. It's okay. It will not change it or erase it. The rules are still there. The occupying heir, the member heir, the resident heir must be fifty-five. It won't matter. You may vote no. That will not be changed. But of course, the wording and the updates and everything for Davis Sterling will be out the window too, so we'll have to just kinda guess. But that, that, that issue will not be changed. Because it was not a change. It is not a change that arises from these new rewritten bylaws. Only the signal was there in the new bylaws that was not in the old ones. It is not a change. Go ahead, vote no. It will not be changed.
All right, we're over here. Over here. Sorry, if you wanna speak, come up to the... Your name and manor number, please.
Gundluk Spa Base, three one four A. And I'm really surprised to hear all this today. I only lived there two years, and we love it here. And we bought it for, for me and my husband to live here, not for our kids. And our kids would much rather have the money that could get out of this unit than to live here. I can tell you that much. But I say, I thought I would learn more about the bylaws than just this qualifying issue. I had one question. There is fifteen articles, and we haven't got into any except for a couple issues of this. But on page sixteen, section three, removal of officers, "Any officer may be removed with or without cause by the board or director at any regular or special meeting of the board." I realize that this is not a new thing, it was in all bylaws just as well. But can you, can you explain to me why you should remove somebody without the cause?
That, that section is a, is a law that's in the California Corporations Code that is applicable to every board that gives the board the authority to remove an officer. The board can't remove a member of the board. The board can't kick off a fellow board member. But the board could turn and say, "Miss Secretary, or Mr. Treasurer, you're not doing your job. We're going to reorganize the officers on the board." And the board can do that at any time. So, that's just California law.
But would that be a cause? I'm thinking about, there is no cause to remove somebody.
It's a good question, and that's what the state legislature enacted in the Corporations Code. It is what it is.
If it, if, if it is for cause, then you have to have a hearing, and the person may testify in their own favor, and the, the other board members have to give proof of the wrongdoings and why they don't want me to be secretary anymore. And so, most boards don't do it for cause, because they don't want to put dirty laundry and insults and so on, show the errors that I have done in office so that I cannot be secretary anymore. It doesn't remove me from the board, it would just remove me from the office of secretary. And so, this is, a simpler way is without cause, 'cause you don't have to have a hearing, and you don't have to air all the differences that the secretary has with the rest of the board.
All right, over here. Name and manor number, please.
Yeah, my name is Irene Huang, and I'm from four six seven C. It's a very interesting meeting today. And also, I was disappointed too, with the very short notice. There's only three days, I got a notice and email, and then came here for the meeting. And I see the ballot, the boxes already, I don't know how long it has been in the community center already. So, probably a lot of people did not have a proper, which, opportunities to voice their opinion, to ask, you know, to ask questions. So, I wish that next time, this can be more, you know, organized better or have, provide more time for, for all of us. And the second thing is that, you know, we hear a lot today as primarily on this property, or whatever, this holder, something. Okay, see, I don't even know these terms. Anyway, the concern is the heir issue of our descendants, of our children, of our grandchildren, how it's gonna pass down. Although, you just mentioned that we did, the board did give us, or the mutual did gave us the choices of our heir can do. But actually, you're taking this choice away by being underage, okay? So, that is not a choice, that is not an option. And that's what I wanna make it. And also, since we all have this concern, I think the rule is made for people, and is also, can be changed by people. So, instead of sitting here and we keep on arguing, keep on talking, keep on, you know, getting disappointed, we can also form and get a petition, and then trying to get this particular clause changed. Why can't we say, "Under the circumstances upon a, something..." Well, I'm not a lawyer, so I cannot tell you what to write, okay? But there is my sonus, yeah. But we can, you know, form a committee and try to work on it, and then to petition and to tell the board, or to ask the board to get that particular sentence changed. The only exception is when this was passed through a trust, or passed through a, you know, will. And you inherited it, then, if you're underage, you should be able to do one, two, three. Yeah, why can't we do that? Yeah, that is my, you know, question. We could even just begin to sign up right now. Get a piece of papers, say how many people wants to, to work on this, and then we can just start it and then get it on to, you know?
It cannot change the bylaws.
Yeah, right, we do. We have that right. We have that right. Right, well, I'm sorry, change the rules, okay? Operation, somebody said, operational rules, operational procedures. So, we can, we can. It's just we all have to work together to get it changed, to rewrite it, you know?
All right, over here. Your name and manor number?
There's nobody there.
There's nobody there? All right, is there another speaker?
Hi, I'm Wendy Rogers, eight nine five B. I, I have not read it. First of all, thank you, I know it's a thankless job. You've done a tremendous amount of work. It's very difficult for, I think, for people who live here to keep on top of everything all the time. It's a big job. I take care of my elderly parents who live in Capistrano Beach. I'm just, don't pay that much attention to it. But anyway, I had a question. First of all, Mr. Beaumont came up right away and said, Article three, section one, the phrase, "Regardless of age," was stricken. I don't know what Article three, section one is, but that's a change. That was, that, when I signed the documents, that, wherever that was, that was in there. So, that is a change. So, I don't understand how you can say there were no changes. That's just one thing, okay? Changing in how it's interpreted, I understand. The second thing I have a question about is, I know when I moved in here, the village was just coming through, like everybody else, this terrible real estate economic downturn. That's what's scary for people, is the forced sale during an economic downturn. It's not that your heirs can't live, live here, but they're forced to sell at a loss during that time, which we don't know when that's gonna happen again. Laguna Woods and others, communities like this, tend to go down first and then come up last. Right now, if I died tomorrow, it'd be fine. My kids, I'm sure, would be happy to sell. But it would be nice to have, as you said, an option of one, two, three. Could they sell it for a dollar to a cousin who's fifty-five and just pay the assessments for a year, and then, and have nobody live there? He would qualify for, I mean, there have to be options. I know, I know that they have to qualify financially and age in order to become a member and to legally sign an occupancy agreement, regardless of whether or not they live there. And I understand the caveat where you have to be, you have to live there for a year, whether or not you actually are occupying the manor. You have to pay the assessments as a resident. They're not gonna, probably, the security's not gonna come by and say, "Nobody's living there." So, I understand that. But, so, you know, people, are people gonna find a way that you sell it to another family member for a dollar at the end, and then, okay, so that's an option. Okay, so what's that gonna do to property values then? I mean, I, and I don't have answers to these questions, but it seems like, as residents, you know, I'm a little bit younger than some people, and I'm not that on top of it, but I do read, and I get confused, and I know, just the fact that so few people vote in here. People are, people are gonna be living here not knowing that this change has been made to their estate planning. It's very difficult to think of. You know, I'm not talking about myself right now, because I'm aware of it. And my plans could totally change by that time, but it just, anyway, the way things are done is kind of difficult. The only other thing I had was... I guess that's it, really. The, the, I wanted to talk about Article three, section one, that where the words, "Regardless of age," were stricken. That was the first thing that Mr. Beaumont said. And to me, that sounds like a change in words that really can change the way it's interpreted. So, okay.
Do you have any other speakers?
I just have a statement is, what I, I sense-
Name and manor number, please.
Oh, eight eight four D via Mendoza. What I'm sensing is everyone, most everyone here has a fear. So, that these changes have created a lot of anxiety. And, and there hasn't been enough explaining, because this, this whole thing is over most people's head. And so, when they think that their children can't inherit, but if most of you had voted for the co-ops to go to a year-long leasing, that was one of the biggest mistakes you made. And I voted against it. Because we had a perfect scenario at six months, which is what has created all the change in the leasing, and too many people coming in and buying to just rent. The thing that the board has set up, I really applaud them for taking charge of that. Because we were getting too many renters in here, and, and the rules not being followed. We have so many children living with their parents, and then grandkids, and it's, it was getting out of hand. So, I think, so, what, one of the concerns is also is in the area of where of inheritance. Will there be a first ride of refusal, or like this little gal was talking about, having certain steps? So, people are not so afraid. That, that's really where this is coming from. That, that's really where this is coming from. It's because they haven't been educated on the bylaws, the resolution, the occupancy agreement, and that's one of the things we real estate agents really need to go into when we're talking to people. But you've got a crowd tonight that is afraid. Their, their fear, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, Robert Cunningham, seven forty-eight C again. You guys have made the comments about how much time was devoted to working on these bylaws and everything. My question is, if that was the case, why are there four separate mentions in here of notes to Jeff, the lawyer, about things that he should do? Why are they included in the bylaws? If you're not aware of that, the first one is on page twenty-one at the bottom.
That, that's, that's the copy that was provided tonight and that's the draft, just red line marked up copy that we all wanted you to see and that just happened.
So then, so then that's not the, okay, I understand then. So that's not in the, in the new ones, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
We only showed you that. We gave you a clean copy of this is what the proposed bylaws are. The red line copy, the strikeout copy is what we have been working on for a year and we did nothing as a committee without passing it by our attorney. So every time there's a note for Jeff or whatever, he, we ask him to go over and give his opinion and help us with that so that we would be sure that everything that we did in those bylaws was legal and that was of prime importance to us.
Yes, Roberta Burke again. I, I would like to disagree with my neighbor here. I don't know that we're all afraid as much as we are disappointed and concerned that things change under us without us knowing. And I think that that's part of it and it brings me to an issue that we haven't discussed here tonight, except very quickly, and that is the way this fifty-five, whether it was there or not, it was permitted for all the years I'm living here. The way in which that changed, the way, certainly you didn't have to be fifty-five to buy a place for your parents to live. At any rate, what I really wanted to bring out is that the change is coming as a surprise to people who have seen other things take place and other ways of living and inheritance and things take place. We have the issue of the first right of refusal. We know there are problems here. We know places have to be renovated. We've invited in many people. I don't mean invited, but we've allowed over all of these years, people to come in, renovate and resell, investors, whether they were real estate agents, whether they were neighbors, whatever they may be, they've done it. Now there was talk, you mentioned something the other day about getting real, getting contractors together and see what, what can be done with them and put them into a different category. My question is now, that, you made a, a, a statement at the beginning of the meeting when the, the first right of refusal was discussed that, oh, it's never been used, it's never been used. My question is, are we going to be hit with that as being used often? In other words, all of a sudden, is it going to happen that when somebody puts a unit up for sale or our children who inherited are being forced to sell, that the board comes along and gives a price? Yes, there'll be three appraisers and blah, but there are places that can't be compared. If you bring in a buyer who really wants it, it's going to be $2,000 more than the appraiser is going to come in with.
Then you would sell it to them.
What will, what is our protection, Mr. Beaumont? That something like that doesn't happen in the future and all of a sudden, all these units are being purchased by the mutual?
No.
Have them redone by contractors, sharing the, the, the profits and that's how they're sold. What is our protection? I know you work for them and not basically for us, but how do we protect ourselves?
Well, your last statement's not accurate, it's disingenuous. I'm working for the community and my job is to make sure that I'm giving advice that protects United and the community as a whole. So I take offense to that. I, I wholeheartedly ask each of you to understand that I am so sympathetic that we have had the benefit of endless hours working on this and you haven't. So there's, there's definitely a level of disconnect with respect to some of these issues. But if you just look at the bylaws in that red line copy, you'll see that the one goal that we mentioned earlier that we're trying to accomplish really has been accomplished and it will help us through some of these issues, which is to simplify them. And if you look at that red line draft, Roberta's last question will be answered very easily. And her question was about this right of first refusal. I mentioned it earlier and I, I thought I explained it pretty clearly, that the right of first refusal of United to buy a manor, to buy a membership from you is extremely limited, extremely limited. And if you look at the provision in section six, subsection B, in, in your original bylaws right now, it's on page ten of your original bylaws and I'll look at, I'll see what page it's on in the, on the red line draft that you have in the audience. It, it says very specifically, it's on page, it's page nine. It says, if a member intends to leave the corporation, they give United thirty days written notice. When United receives that written notice, it has a thirty-day window of time to exercise its right to buy your membership. So if you never give United written notice of your intent to leave the corporation, United has no right to offer to buy your membership. It's, it's very limited. So to answer your question, the right of first refusal is so limited that each of you are protected from that unless you voluntarily send a notice and want to go through that process. I think this gentleman on the left hasn't spoke yet.
Well, I have spoken.
Okay.
So I, I think...
Can I interrupt you real quick before, before you, before you make a comment? Has anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoken want to come up and speak? Anybody? All right, Mike, you do. Come on up. Come on up.
Jeff, while, while we're waiting for them to come up, could, could you address the strike of regardless of age? Because this keeps coming back to us. You've, you've made a change because you struck regardless of age and that, so could you address that?
Well, I, I hope I can do it as well as Maggie did because her summary of that was, was precise and, and there was a change. Yes, it was striking that, that phrase regardless of age, but internally and from a legal standpoint, it changes nothing because all it does is it brings in line the bylaws with your occupancy agreement with the civil code and the definition of a stock co-op. Nothing procedurally changes. Nothing changes in the VMS's offices. Nothing changes in the transfer department. Absolutely nothing changes whatsoever and no member will see any changes if these documents are approved. That language was stricken, just again, to make sure that the civil code, the occupancy agreement, and now the bylaws are all consistent with each other.
Thank you.
All right. Is there somebody coming down?
Yes, here she comes. Our lucky winner.
I'm sorry, Jerry Sullivan, five twenty-two G. I've only lived here about six months, but I came from back east originally where co-ops always had a very bad reputation and lived in Northern California for forty years and now I'm down here. And I loved Laguna Woods and I, my main concern was that it is a co-op. And I asked my realtor, I asked the mortgage company, the escrow company, everybody I talked to, I said, my main concern was that I was able to leave it to my daughter who is only twenty-four. So I doubt that I'll be around until she's fifty-five, but God willing. So that is my concern. Who educates the realtors? The mortgage company, the escrow company? You can say, I can read my escrow papers and that's fine, but I do have a vision problem and I have an understanding problem. It would take a lawyer to understand all of that. So that's, that's my main concern. Moving forward, who's going to educate the people out there that are selling these units? And if in the past you set a precedent of letting people buy, younger, younger people inherit the place and then rent it out, why can't we do something in the future saying, starting in two thousand eighteen January, this is no longer going to happen and let the people that are here now that are in the system enjoy it and let their heirs enjoy it? Because again, that was my main concern, was to have a place seven miles from the ocean that my daughter could live in one day because I wanted a house on a lake and she wanted a house near the ocean. So she won. Thank you.
All right. You had one more comment, sir?
Yes, John G., eight seven seven B, Avenida Sevilla. What my comment is that, you know, it's been portrayed that a lot of us don't understand co-ops and it's different than living in a condo. I want to say I understand the difference, but I also understand that people, I bought here for myself. If I live long enough, my children will hit fifty-five. But it was also our intent that we would be able to give it to them and that the rules would allow them to rent it out if necessary and for them to inherit and enjoy this place. And I think that it is important that you understand, that we understand the limitations of a co-op. We also object to the way this realignment and clarification has taken place. Yes, a lot of good work has gone into it, but for the questions and the allergic reaction you have received suggests that it was not enough in terms of preparation and giving us a clearer view.
Okay, I think we'll wrap up. It's been two hours. It's seven o'clock. I just want to say I understand that not everybody agrees with what we do. There is no way that we're ever going to get everybody to agree with everything that we do. There's always going to be somebody or some group that does not agree. We on the board are, one of our main obligations is to the mutual and we need to make sure that the mutual, the corporation is protected. By the same token, we want to make sure our members and residents are protected by the mutual. So that's not mutually exclusive. It goes together and if we protect one, we protect the other. And that's what some of these things are, to be sure that the life that we have here in the village, in United, remains the same. We are very proud that we only have an eight percent rental rate at this time. It has taken a lot of work to keep it down. If you look over to our condo community, it's almost thirty percent. This has great implications with banks who don't want to lend if there's a large rental. It has a lot to do with people who don't want to move in if they feel it's not owner occupied. So there are a lot of things to consider. I apologize from, on the behalf of the board, if you don't feel that we have gotten enough information out to you. It's difficult. Some people don't watch television. We're on television all the time talking about this. Some people don't read the paper. It's been in the Globe a couple of times. We, we go to different clubs and talk to them, but getting to every single six thousand three hundred and twenty-three manners is almost impossible. That's why you, as residents, elect us as members of the board to do this for you. And we have to do it to the best of our ability, looking at all sides, thinking what is best for the community as well as, as every resident. So I appreciate your being here today. I think we've gotten a lot of insight from you all on what you feel and as we've said before, please turn your ballot in. If you don't like what it says and you don't agree with the bylaws, vote no. If you think that for the most part, all of it is good and there might be one or two sections that you disagree with, vote yes. And then as this, one of our residents said, then you could work as a group, coming to the board to, to try to make any change. So do you want to throw out the baby with the bath water or do you want to go ahead and have it? But Mike, please turn your ballot in. And thank you all for coming tonight.
Is there a chance I can ask a question? May I?
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Grossman, eighty-nine G, Cali Aragon. I think after listening to all the people's requests and complaints, what really needs to be done so that everybody understands is that we don't want to have rentals. That's what it's all about. If you make that clear, none of this would come up.
That's what we're trying to do.
Well, you didn't make that clear.
Okay.
I'm sorry everyone thinks a change was a change when it was only a clarification.